Good evening, everybody. We're going to call our September fourteenth meeting to order. So at this time, would everybody please stand for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can Mr. Boiski do a roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Carlson is absent. Mrs. Olson is absent. Mr. Pontillo. Mrs. Kraska.
Here.
Mr. Jess is absent. Mr. Sergiel.
Present, sir.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Here.
Mr. Kinnick.
Here.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Here.
Okay, and we have a quorum. So just public notice, adequate notice of this meeting in compliance with chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five entitled The Open Public Meetings Act has been provided by the action of the Board of Education at its regular meeting on August seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Notices that the courier news, the Star Ledger, and Star Ledger circulated in the school district and a post-it notice to this effect on the Board of Education website and Building Bolt Board Administrative Headquarters, fifty-one West Cliff Street, Somerville, New Jersey. So again, I want to welcome everybody for coming out tonight. I know we have a few comments that will make it just a moment, but this is the opportunity for public comment on any matter related to agenda items. So is there anybody in the audience who would like to make public comment on agenda item only? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to close public comment? That was Ms. Matthews, second. Mr. Sergiel. All in favor of closing public comment?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, public comment is closed. Okay, for approval of minutes, resolved at the Board of Education, approve the minutes of the Board of Education meeting as followed. As follows, August seventeen, twenty twenty-one, the regular meeting, and August seventeen, twenty twenty-one, executive session. Is there a second?
There.
Ms. Van Horn. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boiski do a vote, please.
Ms. Matthews.
Upstate.
Mr. Pontillo. Mrs. Kraska.
abstained.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So again, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always great to see people in the audience, and I know this is a kind of a special evening on a lot of fronts, but I just still want to take, I want to take a little bit of time just to make a few comments on behalf of the board. This has really been a very challenging couple of weeks for the Somerville community. Ida's impact on many neighborhoods was very significant. We were very fortunate that our school facilities were not adversely affected, and we were able to open the school very close to our original start schedule. Throughout the last two weeks, what's been amazing to see is the way the community has pulled together, supported one another, and worked together on cleanup and providing for those in need. Really, on behalf of the board, I want to publicly thank the many students and staff and administrators and parents who were front and center in the storm response. I know firsthand myself, I was involved in a lot of cleanups at different homes, and all of a sudden, a high school student would pop up who just showed up. They saw it on Facebook, or their parents saw it on Facebook, and they would just appear, and they would help out, and they were people's homes that they didn't even know. They just, they just came to help out, and I think it just speaks to volumes about the impact the community's response to this, and the schools were a big part of it. So really, your efforts immediately following the storm and it continued ever since are really greatly appreciated by the community and continue to be appreciated. Despite Ida's impact, you know, we were able to open schools successfully for the first time in eighteen months, and I think this has been lost a bit, you know, with, with the significance of Ida. We have a full day in-person operating schedule for all students, and that's something I think that we should be celebrating. There are certainly things that we'll continue as a board, to continue as a community, to refine and to adjust, but for the many staff who are addressing their own challenges, because many were related to Ida, I just want to personally thank you and on behalf of the board, thank you for doing the hard work of arranging for schedules, preparing for the first day of school, welcoming students, and reestablishing and beginning to reestablish those in-person routines. I think it just speaks to the importance of in-person schooling when we had an event like Ida, to be able to very quickly after that have students in the buildings for a full day. So thank you to everybody who made that possible. I also want to take a moment to formally welcome Jamie Kraska to her first meeting as the Board of, a Board of Education member. She had a few minutes on the stage last time, so welcome to your first meeting as a board member. You've really hit the ground running. You will be serving on the curriculum committee, the technology committee, the policy committee, so it's something, again, I know you've reached out to other board members, I just want to thank you again for your willingness to serve and really just the energy that you're going to bring and your commitment to those committees and the process. And finally, this is always a special meeting because principals take the opportunity to formally introduce new staff to the board, so it's great to see all of you just taking the time to come out and attend tonight. I know how busy this time of year is for teachers, how busy it is for administrators, and I want to thank everybody for just making the time and making the commitment to come tonight. It's just something, again, that is a special opportunity for the board to just have the opportunity to hear principals' comments about you, just to be able to understand who everybody is a little bit, and also for the community to see that on the stream for those people who are attending there. So I wish you all the very best as we move forward this school year, and on behalf of the board, thank you for everything you've done so far and everything you will do across the year for the students and for the overall community. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Tean.
Thank you. I want to start off by once again saying the same thing, which is, you know, thank you to all of our new staff that were able to show up tonight. It is greatly appreciated. We know it's been a busy start of the year, one like last year crazy, this year's crazy, but, you know, we're up and running. So I'm going to have each principal come up and introduce you. So we're going to start with Mr. Reeve. And before he starts, I just want to say, each year, we normally have cake, and it's a time like we kind of pause the board meeting and have cake and all of that, but under the given conditions, we decided we would have, now, Rob, you can go back up there. We have cookies and stuff out in the auditorium, so feel free to grab cookies, water, and thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity tonight. Before I begin, I'd like to say thank you to the Board of Education, too, for, you know, for the resilient effort and communication for during this, the last two weeks with the start of school and everything that impacted the school. So I want to, want to thank you for your support and the communication out to us. So it was very helpful, and, and we're doing it. School is open, and thank you. Okay, without school opening, we wouldn't have our new staff, which I'm very excited to introduce at Vandavere School, and one of our district new staff members I'd like to introduce, as I call your name, if you don't mind coming up and standing up front so that the folks at home could view you, and if you're embarrassed about that, don't worry, you won't be alone. Well, the first person will be. And that, that is district position for our translator for the district, Mr. Dan Fankel. If you can come on up, thank you. Our fourth grade special education teacher, Monica Vajia. Fourth grade teacher, Joe Clark. Our social worker, Lauren Robson. Second grade teacher and Somerville alumni, Hannah Allert. Second grade teacher, Caitlin Reed. Fifth grade teacher, Samantha Civalelo. And these are the new staff members that are present tonight. I would like to read the names of the teachers who could not be present tonight due to previous commitments. Our fourth grade teacher, Lamar Robinson. Preschool secretary, Nancy Barbero. Preschool teacher, Bridget Forrester. Fourth grade teacher, Hope Panza. Fourth grade teacher, Molly Mahoney. And our instructional assistant, Francine Scappa. Instructional assistant, Chica Batnagar. And instructional assistant, Kristen Klosterman. And that is our new hires for this school year, and thank you very much. Very excited to be working with you. It's going to be a great year.
Okay, for our middle school.
I'm sorry. Francine Scappa, if you don't mind coming up, thank you.
All right, so the first and last person.
So for our middle school, I'm going to call Joseph Toriello. Joe is actually joining us as the assistant principal in the middle school, so he's a new staff member as well, so I'll take the moment to introduce and welcome him, and Joe is going to introduce the middle school group.
Thank you, Dr. Tean. Hello to the board. Thank you, everyone. And thank you for welcoming me to my colleagues, thank you for welcoming me as well and onboarding me and helping me get this school year up and running, and now it's my pleasure for the new to welcome the new to the middle school. First up, we have Jacob DiPaolo, Language Arts. Tara Marash, Math, Science, and Girl Soccer Coach. Liza Tucker, Language Arts and Science. Kayla McGlaughlin, our instructional coach. Juliette Pisante, Occupational Therapy. Jenna Steves, Language Arts and Social Studies. Kristen Whitmore, Language Arts. And for those who could not be present with us, Thomas McGreeney, Social Studies. Dale Reeve, Speech. Sonya Said, Math. Laura Kohlhofer, ESL. Sarah Harrington, Science. And Alex Sierra, Music. Welcome, everyone.
Okay, last but not least, is Terry Foley is going to introduce the high school.
Okay, members of the board, Dr. Tean, thank you for having us this evening. Always a pleasure to welcome our new staff every year. I am going to start with Business Department, Mr. Timothy Corrigan. From our English Department, Ariana Ramos. And Rose Maria Russo. There she is. Our new math teacher, Nikki Felice. Social Studies, Nicholas Quintero. From our Special Education Department, Konstantin Moragas. And also from our Special Education Department, Stephanie Fibbs. Instructional Assistant, Cody Mack. And for those who could not join us tonight, we also welcome our media specialist, Andrea Caparalli, and Instructional Assistant, Dawn Vernlocker. And to continue with the high school is Mr. Hade, Principal of the Maps Program.
Good evening, everyone. The Maps Program is also excited to announce two new additional staff members, Mr. Thomas Henry, Teacher of Social Studies. And Mrs. Tracy Webster, Instructional Assistant.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, is our new high school staff. Thank you.
So hopefully, in about forty years, each of you will come up again during your retirement when we recognize you at the board meeting. Now, usually at this time, we're, we are kind as a group, so any of those new staff that want to leave at this time, go grab cookies, talk, and, you know, whatever, you're welcome to, or you can stay, it's your choice. So there's your opportunity to get out if you want.
This would be the appropriate time to leave. Take advantage.
Eat a cookie on the way out.
Can you bring us a cookie?
Okay, continuing on for district highlights, I want to start off by saying how happy we are that the students are back for a regular length school day. We know this has been a transition for everyone and appreciate everyone's patience and understanding as we navigate this new school year, which already has had many twists and turns. There are new procedures in place in every building, so we are carefully reviewing the effectiveness of each procedure and making changes where needed. I want to start off by sharing what I have shared previously, which is, it is important to understand that school districts in New Jersey are required to follow the guidance set forth by the New Jersey Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Education, and the State of New Jersey. Also, it is important to know that the contact tracing guidance we follow is in alignment with that provided by the New Jersey Department of Health. Our contact tracing investigators have undergone training and certification through Johns Hopkins. We have been hearing from parents and staff that the CDC said this, or the World Health Organization said that, or the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends this. We hear all of those recommendations and appreciate them. However, it doesn't matter if what these organizations are saying makes sense or not, or if we personally agree with what is being shared or not. We have to follow the guidance set forth by the New Jersey Department of Health, New Jersey Department of Education, and the State of New Jersey, which is not always in alignment with the CDC, the World Health Organization, and the American Academy of Pediatrics. Another area I want to shed some light on is quarantine. The need to quarantine is determined after contact tracing has been conducted when a positive COVID case is identified. A close contact is someone who is closer than six feet if unmasked, or closer than three feet if masked, for a cumulative fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour time period, regardless if individuals are indoors or outdoors. When conducting contact tracing, if the investigators cannot determine the length of time students were in close contact, or if they are not able to identify definitively if a close contact with an infected individual occurred, all possible close contacts would need to be quarantined. We, as a district, are trying to avoid this. In regards to masking, as we all know, masking is required in our public schools, but masking is directly related to contact tracing and quarantine. We have received questions regarding masking during physical education, recess, and questions about students being able to eat snacks in the classroom. Each of the buildings are carefully observing the procedures currently in place, having conversations with their staff and other administrators, and formulating potential changes to establish plans. As we all know, recess only applies to Vandavere. The students are outside, depending on the weather. When outside, Mr. Reeve and Ms. Frevert announced to the students that they can take mask breaks whenever they need it. The students know that if they remove their masks, they must distance themselves six feet or more. I have observed recess on multiple days and grade levels, and so far, the students are doing an awesome job in this area. They are really excited to be outside with their friends, and they are keeping a distance of three feet or more with masks and separating from others when they need a mask break. For snacks, Mr. Reeve and Ms. Frevert have, are having discussions with each of the grade levels to determine the best approach to enable snack time while ensuring the safety of all. For physical education in all buildings, when students are engaged in low physical activities, they are remaining masked and keeping a distance of three feet or more away from each other. When engaging in high physical activity, students are permitted to remove their masks but need to maintain six feet or more distance from each other, which anyone that's been in a physical education class knows is not an easy thing to do. Adhering to these distancing requirements is important because we are not interested in needing to quarantine whole classes or grade levels. Our recess periods have about a hundred twenty students outside at the same time, for those who don't know. Our physical education classes are around thirty students or more. So also, we are very aware of the different sides of the masking issue, and we actually respect both positions. As a result, we are making the best decisions based on the requirements we have to follow and observed realities, and not just implementing a plan and seeing if it results in masks, close contacts, and quarantines. So I ask, please bear with us as we determine the best approach to limit the need to quarantine students, which will pull them away from the in-person learning that is currently happening and that they are so excited to be a part of. Onto the individual building highlights. On Vand, for Vandavere, on September first, we welcomed back our teachers and staff members with the Day of Professional Development. The workshops, webinars, and training were delivered in Eye Ready Classroom for Mathematics, American Reading Company for Language Arts, and Creative Curriculum for the preschool. The professional development for the entire staff continued with an overview and workshop of VDV's PBIS Initiative. The staff were able to familiarize themselves with the kickboard application for recording positive behavior data for students on a school-wide basis, which directly supports our school-wide philosophy of be safe, be respectful, and be responsible. The maintenance crew and custodial crew, which once again applaud all of them, they have been phenomenal, phenomenal all summer long, and with everything that just recently happened with Ida, they've been phenomenal with that as well. So the maintenance crew and custodial staff have done an outstanding job managing the external and internal projects conducted this summer. The classrooms, hallways, and common areas look excellent and were well-prepared for the students' arrival. The PTO demonstrated their support once again for the Vandavere students and teachers with their annual Talk the Wall. VDV staff members joined volunteers from the PTO along with a number of students to create welcome-back messages, beautiful pictures, and supportive wishes to the VDV school community. Onto SMS, the middle school held an in-person orientation and building tour for both seventh and eighth grade students who have never been inside the school due to virtual learning or being new to the school or district. We had over fifty students in total for the two days where students participated in the orientation and building tour. Camp SMS twenty-one, twenty-two was an amazing success with nearly ninety percent of the incoming sixth graders in attendance. Mr. Zubia and his team of teachers and staff members did an incredible job orienting the students to their new middle school experience, the expectations, and the resources that are available to them. For SHS, the marching band and color guard students, advisors, and parents, volunteers kicked off Bill Band Camp on August sixteenth in preparation for the start of the school year. We were looking forward to seeing them perform under the Friday night lights and fall competitions. We wish them luck this season. The Somerville High School administration, secretarial, custodial, and maintenance staff worked hard in preparation for the first day of school. A special thank you to Jimmy One Job Gabriel and his staff for their tremendous efforts during the summer months in preparation for our opening. SHS staff and faculty had a great day of learning on September first. Staff participated in professional development in the Linkit Diagnostic Testing Platform, data analysis, content area training, and ended the day getting their classrooms ready for the start of the school year. It was a successful opening day at SHS on September eighth. Grade-level class meetings were held on September ninth and tenth by the high school administrators to outline expectations, procedures, and answer any questions from the students in an effort to ease their transition back to school. And that concludes the district highlights.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Tean, and again, I just want to thank, to reiterate what Dr. Tean was saying, you know, I have a daughter at the high school this year. Transition back to everyday in-person learning was, was something that was different for her, but, you know, she's having a great year and, and I think really enjoying that opportunity, and I think, you know, just talking with students in a neighborhood, just a routine of getting back to in-person, you know, has been phenomenal for, for students. So thank you to everybody, that's a ton of work behind the scenes that takes place every year, just to open school, and this year, I think, was just, again, special considerations. It hasn't been a normal year in a couple of years now, so thank you to everybody for their efforts with that. So moving on to report of board items and committee reports, Mr. Carlson's not here, so I will take care of finance. So motion to approve items one through fourteen to be moved upon by the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. One is board secretary's financial reports. Two, acceptance of monthly reports. Three, payroll. Four, the bills list. Five, line item transfers. Six, non-public security aid program. Seven, non-public technology initiative program. Eight, roofing HVAC replacement project at Vandavere School. Nine, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Non-Public Security Aid Program. Ten, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Non-Public Nursing Services Agreement. Eleven, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Non-Public Technology Initiative Program. Twelve, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Non-Public Textbook Services Agreement. Thirteen, the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Non-Public Law nineteen seventy-seven Chapters one ninety-two, one ninety-three Agreement. And fourteen, Educational Services Commission of New Jersey Non-Public School Nursing Services. Is there a second?
Second, sir.
All right, Mr. Sergiel is the second. Any discussion? Any seeing none? Mr. Boiski do a roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Abstained.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick.
Yes.
Okay, motion to approve items fifteen through seventeen be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Fifteen, the bills list. Seventeen, the Branchburg Shared Services Agreement for Attendants Officer. And seventeen, award Apple device bid to Sycamore. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Van Horn, second. Any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boiski.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kinnick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boiski. Moving on to the technology committee, Ms. Van Horn.
Yes, I have an update from the technology committee. New staff received devices during summer distribution dates. Students in grades six and nine received their new Chromebooks during August. New Somerville students received Chromebooks August, September eighth through tenth. In the, we are in the process now of assessing student Chromebook loss due to flooding from Ida and providing replacement devices where necessary. All preschool and kindergarten students are receiving Chromebooks during this week. The instructional staff will receive a secondary device for potential hybrid instruction during this week, and the Mac buyback, MacBook buyback bid process has been completed. Technology staff have been responding to all support tickets for staff and students, and all accounts have been created for new staff and students.
Thank you very much. Could I just clarify, Dr. Tean, if you could, the hybrid instruction, the potential there is something that we have to plan for according to the state, I believe, right? I just want to, I want to clarify that.
Yeah, there's no, you're not allowed to have virtual, you're not allowed to provide virtual instruction, however, what we're actually terming it is quarantine instruction, and that's designed for any student that is, has to quarantine as a result of either being in close contact or if they themselves contract COVID. So it is short-term, and our plan for the district is basically to have the students livestream into their classrooms.
Just wanted to clarify that because sometimes when people hear hybrid, they think there's a chance that we may resort back to what we had to do in previous years, and that's not the intent there. It's, it's more of a short-term thing, so thank you for that clarification.
And this, this is why the technology department worked really hard to get two devices, once again, to every staff member that has the potential of having to have a quarantine situation where they might have the livestream.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Okay, curriculum report, Ms. Van Horn.
Yes, the curriculum committee last met on August seventeenth, and we reviewed the Somerville, summer curriculum retreat. Principals. Principals spent time thinking about how to leverage the coaching role, and we began an exploration of EduPlanet, the new curriculum database. Curriculum began thinking about creating the next four-year PD plan. Curriculum also trained on reflective practice and EduPlanet. All new curriculum written in EduPlanet was shared for approval at our meeting tonight. We discussed how this will be a beta year with EduPlanet so we can let the staff help divide, define how it will be used in the future. We gave an overview of the tentative plans for the September 1st PD Day, and we discussed changes in the curriculum and instruction team. And that was it for the report. And now, I have a motion to approve that Item 1 be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, and that is the curriculum map revisions at Vandavere Elementary School and Somerville Middle School.
You have a second, please?
Second.
And Ms. Matthews, second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
Motion to approve the, that Items 1 through 5 be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Number 2 is the revised 2021-2022 school calendar. Number 3, the curriculum map revisions at Somerville High School. Number 4, Somerville High School student request that a student, number 203809, to complete his or her senior year at Somerville High School due to a family relocating out of Somerville. Number 5, a travel expenditure resolution.
Is there a second?
Second, sir.
And Mr. Sergiel, is the second. Okay, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Van Horn. Mr. Pontillo, do you buildings and grounds report?
Yes, at Vandavere, they installed LED lights in the hallways. They repaired HVAC units. In the middle school, they installed LED lights in those hallways, and they repaired HVAC units there as well. In the high school, they installed LED lights in the hallways. The auxiliary gym and the main gym, they repaired HVAC units, replaced the ramp by the MAPS entrance. And for all three buildings, all work orders are being completed in a timely order. I do want to add one little piece. We had an athletics committee meeting last night, and if people are looking out at the athletic fields, I just want you to know that the track work is moving forward. They're going to have pavement done, I believe, this week. And we spoke with Tim Davis, and he's ready and prepared to deal with it as it presents itself going forward in terms of the use of the fields. But we should be ready for the first football game.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Pontillo. Okay, moving on to Policy Committee. Ms. Olson cannot be here tonight, so I will take care of this resolution. So we do have a first reading of policies, so resolve that the Board of Education approve the following policies, regulations for first reading. This is policy 5141.10, which is face coverings, and 5141.11, which is vaccination and testing. I just want to clarify, these are mandated policies by the Department of Education, so again, these were put on this meeting because they really have to be approved as quickly as possible. So is there a second for that resolution?
Right.
Okay, Mr. Sergiel, is there any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyce. Okay, Mr. Sergiel, athletics and student activities.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President and Madam Vice President. I just, I just have a comment at first, and I can't top the comments that President Kimmick made to open tonight's board meeting, but I also just wanted to take the time to thank all the first responders in this fabulous town, police, fire, first aid, who answered the call and helped our fellow neighbors and residents. I also want to thank the residents, teachers, students, staff, and administration and board members here, who we all saw each other around town. And we supported, you know, everybody supported the community, the food, clothing, helping, helping clean homes, load dumpsters, empty basements, or just provide the comfort for those who, who lost so much during such an atypical event. So I also just wanted to make a public comment to thank a couple of people. Jason Kraska, who is always a community advocate, you see him everywhere, and also Councilman Roger Vroom, who I've seen several times jumping into action. So if that isn't living by example or being all-in, I don't know what is. And, you know, sir, last night, we did have our first Athletics and Activities Committee meeting. You know, we had deferred them because of the ever-moving dynamic COVID environment, so we had our first one. And, you know, we discussed planning quarterly meetings, and we all agreed upon those dates and that will be running this year, and also with the activities with their advisors and discuss the track update that Board Member Pontillo brought up. So we should be meeting those timelines to bring the football, soccer, field hockey teams back onto Field One. I'm also really excited to resume these over 30 clubs that we have to offer our students, such as the Interact Club, Cosmetology, Club du Fonce, that's the French club, and, you know, the Orchestra, Club de Valkyrie, and that's just to name a few. So with that said, I'm going to go on to some of our sports highlights. Let's talk about football. The Orange Monsters of the Gridiron traveled to the streets of Philadelphia to win their season opener against Only Charter 25-0. They lost a tough one at Rutgers, the Northern Highlands, 35-20, and then took their frustration out in their first home-esque opener against Carterett by beating them 47-0. But let me tell you about that game. Unfortunately, I was not there, but football is back. If you saw the pack, the size of the pack, the size of the crowd, everybody was cheering, so it's just a great feeling. And listen, they will, you know, that loss to Only Charter was a, you know, snapped a 25-game, I'm sorry, Northern Highlands snapped a 25-game winning streak. But right now, they're sitting at 2-1. Coach Whittaker, quarterback, M&M, Mike Miller, and Jamlo, Jamin Bryant, are ready to take the Pioneers to exactly the same heights that they've been reaching every year for the past four years. All right, so let's talk about the other football, okay? There's no better way to kick off the boys' season than defeating their crosstown rivals, and that's what the Football Boys Club did. Marty Max Broadbent scored his first varsity goal, and Matt Graber protected the net and said no five times to keep the Spartans from putting the biscuit in the basket, okay? Boys cross country, they played the Roxbury Invitational this Saturday. Top four times, Mark Bisbee, 17 minutes 41 seconds, Nate Lordy, 1809, Paul Galiato, 1848, and the team man Tyler Jekowski, 19 minutes. I am looking forward to reporting on girls' soccer, field hockey, and tennis next month as soon as that data comes in. I'm going to talk about the Robotics Club a little bit, because I had the opportunity on August 28th to visit Robotics Day here at the high school. And this is where the 8th and 12th grade students had the opportunity to participate in an all-day challenge. It was kind of a recruiting effort for the Robotics Club that they start off very early in the year. So the future gearheads learned about the design process and used all these skills to build on the Arduino-based robot-accomplish task for points, if I pronounce that correctly. Arduino, I think I did. So while building, students learned about the mechanical features of the robot, how to read and follow wiring diagrams, and how to code using the Arduino programming language. This event was a huge success, as it always is. They drew about 20 students this year, and almost half of them were non-team members in 8th and 9th grade. So you can imagine what the future holds for these future, what the future holds for these future gearheads, so to speak. So I was, like I said, I was there for about an hour that day, very impressed with what I saw. The team is jumping right into their build efforts for the next few weeks to prepare for the first offseason event in November, and they will also be hosting a new member orientation on September 29. Now, Dr. Tean spoke about this also briefly. The marching band did have their band camp this year, and, you know, because they have not performed yet, I didn't bring music with me tonight because I didn't want to give away any secrets, but this year's, this year's theme is called moving on. Let's, let's face it, we've had a fun year, you know, to say the least, in managing this COVID environment. And the marching band, the color guard, the pit crew, all the supporting parents, and the Schmoozma Boos Club, they are ready to move on. And this is going to feature music by the elegant Stevie Wonder, Matchbox 20, and maybe a song from a famous movie regarding a chocolate factory as well. So, so I'm looking forward to it. They will, they were supposed to have their first performance this Friday night against Raleigh, but that was just going to be transferred to the pit crews, so their first competition will be this Saturday. It was going to be, like I said, this is ever-moving, it was going to be 100 Central, but it might be shifted to Hillsborough High School, so please stay tuned for that. And sir, if, oh, my last statement, if there's one thing that brings the world together, it's the soul-speaking power of music. So with that, sir, that is my report tonight. Back to you, Mr. President and Madam Vice President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sergiel. I think it's good to hear you just fired up about in-person activities, in-person sports, in-person clubs, you know. I was at the football game the other night. I mean, that was, that was just really, just a lot of fun to see the community together like that. Even though it wasn't here, you know, it was over a torp, it was still just a phenomenal evening, I think, just because people were together that way for the first time in a long time.
And forgive me, I forgot to mention three things. One, the Pioneer Football Team, everything going on schedule, will have their first game, I think it was, I think it's October 1st on a Friday night, and that will be their homecoming game. And then also, the, the marching band home show will be here at Somerville High School on the 9th of October as well. So, so both will be here, and I'm looking forward to that.
Looking forward to it, too. Thanks so much. All right, great report. Ms. Matthews, the Ad-Hoc Equity Committee.
Yes, I was absent last meeting, and I'm sure my, the Equity Committee was reported on. We will be setting our meetings till the end of the year, and right now, no report.
Great, thank you so much. Mr. Jess could not be here this evening, so I'll just give an update on the Ad-Hoc Communications Committee. In Dr. Tean's community letter, if people had looked at that, there was a paragraph that just explained that we are doing outreach for members of the community to express interest and join the Communications Committee. So there was a form on that letter that we would ask that people who are interested, just please complete the form, and those will go, those responses will go to Mr. Jess. And we're expecting that that would close within the next week or so, and then he can actually do some outreach to people who are interested in joining that committee, and we can start, you know, actually moving forward with the initial meetings of that Ad-Hoc Committee. So work was done on that. He did put the letter together, the form was actually looked at by a number of people, and it was posted this, this past week. So please look for that if you're interested, and you can find that in the community briefing. All right. And then, Mr. Pontillo, do you have an Ad-Hoc Negotiations Committee report?
Oh, we've got a meeting.
All right, great, thank you so much. All right, moving on to Personnel, Dr. Tean.
Okay, for PS 8, resolve that the Board of Education approve and/or accept the following appointments upon recommendation of superintendent of schools. Appointments and salaries are contingent upon verified documentation. Number 1, to rescind the appointment of the listed individuals. Number 2, to accept the resignation/retirement of the following individuals. Number 3, to approve the appointment of the listed individuals to the positions indicated. Number 4, to approve the appointment of the following individuals to the position indicated. Number 5, to approve the appointment of the listed staff members to serve as members of the school safety climate team at Somerville Middle School. Number 6, to approve the appointment of the following staff members to serve as members of the school improvement panel at Somerville Middle School. Number 7, to approve the creation of the following newly-created positions. Number 8, to abolish the following positions. Number 9, to approve an extension in unpaid childcare leave of absence for Megan Roach. Number 10, to approve an extension in the unpaid childcare leave of absence for Courtney Grace. Number 11, to approve a maternity leave and childcare leave of absence for Kelly Connolly. Number 12, to rescind the appointment of Caitlin Bennett from the position of cafeteria playground aide. And number 13, to approve the appointment of all Somerville Middle School staff to the position of breakfast duty monitor for the school year.
Okay, on this one, we need a motion.
So moved, sir.
Okay, so, Mr. Sergiel, had a second?
Second.
Ms. Van Horn? Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Boyce.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
For 9 through 12, and district-wide, resolve that the Board of Education approve and/or accept the following appointments upon recommendation of superintendent of schools. Appointments and salaries contingent upon verified documentation. Number 14, to abolish the listed position. Number 15, to approve the creation of the listed positions. Number 16, to accept the resignation/retirement of the listed individuals. Number 17, to approve the appointment of the listed individuals to the positions indicated. Number 18, to approve the appointment of, it's not actually an attached list, but to the list of individuals to the position of Activity and Club Advisor at Somerville High School. Number 19, to approve the appointment of Christopher Baldino to the position of MAPS Coordinator. Number 20, to approve the appointment of all Somerville High School teaching staff members to the position of Central Detention Monitors. Number 21, to approve the appointment of all Somerville High School teaching staff members to the position of Hall Monitors. Number 22, to approve the appointment of the, not attached, but listed, individuals to the position of Game Workers at Somerville High School. Number 23, to approve the unpaid leave of absence in accordance with the family medical leave of absence for Maureen Nevada. Number 24, to approve an unpaid leave of absence for Kevin Burke. Number 25, to approve a paid maternity leave of absence and an unpaid childcare leave of absence for Amy Sutton. Number 26, to amend the salary of Daniel Fanko, part-time ARP SR3 grant-funded translator. Number 27, to approve the appointment of Melissa Mackenzie, the position of McKendie Vento Homeless Liaison. Number 28, to approve the appointment of the listed staff members to write curriculum for Spanish 1 and Spanish 2 at Somerville High School. Number 29, to approve the listed individuals to the position of substitute for the school year. And number 30, to approve an extension to the unpaid childcare leave of absence for Nicole Apizado.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Van Horn, second.
Second, sir.
Okay, Mr. Sergiel, any discussion? Okay, Mr. Boyce.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Mrs. Kraska.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmick.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyce. Are there any old business items that board members would like to address? I'm sorry? Yeah, it's after, it's after new business.
This is not agenda items.
So we're doing old business first. Is there any old business?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to close old business?
Oh.
Was that Ms. Matthews?
Moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Ms. Van Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, any new business from board members?
I think I might want to make a comment. I had the opportunity to watch a council meeting last night, and I just feel that it's the position, I believe it's the position of board administration. There are facilities that are open to our residents upon proper request and if only other platforms. You know, the only way I think that anyone would ever be denied is if they didn't have the appropriate coverage if we had a COVID pandemic. But people should feel free to ask for use of the facilities, whether it's wrestling or basketball, recreation. This is the people's building, and it should be available to them. And I believe that's the position of our board.
Thank you, Mr. Pontilla. I, my own? Yeah. Just to reiterate that, I, I think we've talked about this collectively, you know, in, in different committees. You know, the intention is to have a fully open school year. And that, that includes the opportunity for recreation to be able to submit requests to use facilities. And as we did pre-COVID, I, I think the only consideration that could potentially be out there is that somehow there, you know, the pandemic got much worse over the upcoming months, and, and the governor made some type of statement that, you know, we would not be able to function in a way that we fully intend to function. But the intent of the board is to actually allow usage of those facilities, usage of those, of opportunities for activities that take place as we did prior to the pandemic. So I think it's important, and I appreciate you saying that, Mr. Pontilla, just to have that publicly stated. You know, I also watched that meeting. You know, I know there are some potential misunderstandings, so hopefully, you know, we're able to clarify that. And, and I also think just, just, you know, reaching out, you know, to either a board member or to Mr. Boyce in this case, just to clarify is, is, is important to do as well, because sometimes there's misunderstandings, and that's not the intent of the board, or a misunderstanding that we want the community to have.
If, if I may add, sir, just really quick, because, you know, I've, we had this quick conversation just before the meeting. You know, I've been a, I've been a Cub Scout leader, a soccer coach, a baseball coach, a basketball coach, probably the last, better part of the last 15 years. I, I don't recall an incident where the district facilities were not available. I remember coaching at Vandevere, at the middle school, at the high school, for, for many games. So, you know, unless there's, like I said, unless mandated by the state, I wouldn't see in any other area where we, where we would say no. You know, in, in the past, you know, currently, Ms. Matthews and I serve as liaisons to the, to the borough council. I remember in 2019, we, we began and engaged in, you know, semi-annual meetings with the council just to discuss mutual interests or any issues in the ever-evolving town. You know, and I remember last year, speaking to the mayor, this was in April, when COVID was really, you know, very fast, very moving, and the district and the borough were trying to manage this in real time. We, we, you know, determined it was better to defer those until another time. I'm wondering if that time is, is now, now that we have more data, more knowledge, and, you know, we are, we are now having public meetings. And just wondering, Mr. President, if maybe in the future we can reach out to Mr. Mayor Sullivan and probably reschedule those meetings, because we do have these mutual interests, like safe routes to school, and as stated, rec programs for our students. And, you know, not only, not only are they a feeder program, but they're also the character builders for our students. And so I think, I think we've had a very good relationship, and we have, we, you know, we have that common ground. So, so just wondering if that's something we can pursue.
What I'm about to say is really for fun, but I remember using the gym as a seat, as an adult, and having recreation out there. I've played volleyball there as an adult. I've played basketball there as an adult. Nobody wanted me on the court, by the way, because I'm really a wrestler. But it's the community's buildings. They pay for it, and it's, it should be available to them. And there should be nothing but a collaborative relationship with every appropriate entity in the community, and that's...
If I understand correctly, the reorganization meetings for the council are held right here, right?
January, yes.
Okay, so I, I think the request is that we just, I don't think we have to have a resolution on that. It's more, can we just initiate just a,
Right.
an outreach to the community at that point, and see if Borough Council can reestablish those meetings. That, my understanding is, we're in place already, prior to COVID, that there was an agreement that we wanted to meet a couple times a year just to, you know, have face-to-face conversations and just make sure that, that we're all working under similar assumptions and, and, you know, doing the best job we can.
Just to consider a relationship. You know, there are maintenance.
Okay. All right, so certainly, I think, yes, we'll, we'll reach out and we'll look to establish that. Thank you. All right, is, is there any other new business? Okay, can we have a motion to close new business?
Still moved.
Is that Ms. Matthews, second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Van Horn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. All right, so at this point, we reached the hearing of the public regarding agenda items and non-agenda items. At this time, the comment is invited out of any matter related to the school district. So if there are members of the public who are present that would like to approach the mic, please remember to state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Shimigawa. I live at 18 Fieldstone Drive in Somerville, New Jersey. I'm a parent of an 8th and a 10th grader, and I'm extremely happy that we're back to a semi-normal school year. And thank you for everybody who has made that possible and the effort that went into that. I learned in August, when I reviewed my son's schedule, that there will be no scheduled lab component for the general and honors level science classes at Somerville High School this year. I was disappointed that my son will not have the opportunity to participate in a full-length lab class. As a former research chemist, I still remember some of the labs I completed in high school. Labs not only provide hands-on learning, which is known to be highly effective in all areas of education, but also provide opportunities to learn skills and techniques that cannot be acquired by watching a demonstration, whether it be live or virtual. My husband, also a former chemist, compares chemistry without lab to a band class where students listen to music and figure the notes, but without actually playing music. Or a VOTAC culinary class where students study the techniques and recipes, but don't actually cook anything. Furthermore, I believe the scientific thought process and problem-solving learned in labs is incredibly important and a skill our students would benefit from developing. It's about learning, sometimes the hard way, that the more prepared you are, the smoother things go. And while oftentimes it is about seeing theory in practice, sometimes it's more than just that. It's evaluating why theory and practice don't match, looking at what went wrong, considering how to do it better next time, and sometimes just realizing that theory applies to the perfect environment and that there are many complexities that need to be considered. These are skills and, skills and processes that can be applied to other disciplines as well. I reached out to my son's teacher, and she's willing to work with me to provide enrichment for him. While I'm extremely grateful that she is willing to work with me, this is, he is just one of hundreds of students at Somerville High School taking science. And he's lucky to have a parent who has the time and energy to ensure quality scientific education. The absence of an appropriate time for labs hamstring students who are genuinely interested in a complete scientific education and does not provide a full view of what is involved in the sciences. Additionally, it does not encourage our students to consider these fields for future studies. I think I skipped something here. I've been told by the authorities of guidance and curriculum that there will still be labs, and I'm sure that the teachers will do the best they can with the time that they have. But when you consider the difficulty of safely providing instructions, time for setup, and execution, and cleanup of a lab in 40-minute period, I'm sure that the quantity, as well as the quality of the labs, will be limited. I realize that my comments, that I realize at this point that my comments are likely too late to impact the 21-22 school year. But if Somerville High School does not go to block scheduling next year, I implore you to reconsider the decision about the science labs and reinstate them for the 22-23 school year. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Sally Booth, 33 Bullion Road, Basking Ridge. I have a torn meniscus, sorry about that. I want to say, first of all, I couldn't be happier to be in person with the students. It's a world of difference. It's unbelievable. And it's like, I see them, I've been seeing them all on the screen for a year and a half, and it's like seeing a celebrity, and I see them in person. It's really, really great. So I couldn't be happier to be in person. I want to also reiterate what everyone said about the storm, Melissa Mackenzie organizing all the shelters, and everything that the school, the board administrators have done has been fantastic. I teach a lot of students that have been affected, and they feel totally supported and are just provided with everything that they need. They feel very safe. They get their clothes, they have their Chromebook fixed right away. It's, it's, it's really quite impressive to see. I am happy to hear that you're looking at the Department of Health, and, you know, you, you, Dr. Tehan, you mentioned that you're dictated by what the Department of Health, what the New Jersey, but I, it kind of moves me that you should be thinking about the safety of our students and staff. That should be, and that should be based on science. So that's why when people say, well, the CDC says that it's because they've looked at the data and masks work. They looked at the data and say vaccines work. They looked at the data and say that, you know, keeping six feet, those things. So I, you shouldn't feel that you're doing anything wrong. You're trying to keep the people safe in that thing. And to, to Mr. Sjedil, we, we can't move on. I know we want to, but we can't yet. And we, we have to be in this for another year anyway. And what concerns me is we, in this district, we have a lack of communication, which is why I've signed up for the communication. And I know you're going to say, we write the letters, but we just learned about the virtual learning protocol yesterday. It's already had started the day before. I know, you know, there were already kids out. I know, you're going to say, that's not true, but there were two students out already on the 13th. And it's fine, I know, everything's changing. This is really hard, I get it. But because I want to be on the Communications Committee, I've been doing research, and I looked at other districts. And they have, you know, a whole dashboard, and I've gone, I've said this before, where they have the number of cases at each school, and they have a percentage, and they have, you know, and I know you, Dr. Tehan wrote us today, we're getting a fax and an FAQ sheet, which is fantastic, but many districts already have all of this. Regarding the vaccines, I have never been asked to show my vaccine card. I don't know what's happening with that. I know you have until the October 18th, but most districts have already started testing, and every district I know started in August 17th to have their vaccination cards uploaded or whatever. They, they did. I'm telling you, that's, I have many colleagues in different, and I live in a town, different town, and all of these things. And I get it, it's hard. But I just think the staff would feel a lot more secure if we had more information, transparency about how everything is being handled. So, and regarding the other thing I wanted to just mention about, so I, the board, I hope you're aware that if a teacher has to quarantine, they can, not unvaccinated teacher, they have to use their personal days and then their personal illness days. Or personal, yeah. Anyway, oh. Yeah, I guess, but if they run out, then they have to take unpaid leave. Again, I'm speaking to you as a president of a school board. I'm on a school board in Newark, New Jersey. We are using our federal money to alleviate and help our teachers do that. Okay, we are, we, we understand, we can't, so we've split the baby. So in our district, we said, okay, they take five days, we give them five days. Whatever, you know, it's seven days now, so we'll go down. We're having a meeting next week, I'll find out. But again, there's a lot of federal dollars that you all receiving, and I know the FCCRA has dissipated, but there's still other money that could go to alleviate the stress. A lot of parent, a lot of teachers are parents that may have to quarantine. That's the other thing, we have to take unpaid leave if a child has to quarantine. So if you have a seven-year-old that's in a class or whatever, and you have to stay home, and Dr. Tehan has said, we have to take unpaid leave. I think that's an undue burden, giving this unprecedented and unpredictable times when there is federal money available that you all can choose to use the way you see fit. So, that's what I have to say. So thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening, Pat Frain, 201 Scobie Lane, Somerset, New Jersey. I would like to take a second, please, to thank Patty Willenbrock for her years of dedicated service to the Somerville School District and the Somerville community. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you for the comments. Are there any other public comments?
Just wanted to add to Ms. Frain's comments. As a friend of Patty Willenbrock, I wish her very much the best as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sjedil. Okay, at this point, can we have a motion to close public comment? Ms. Matthews? Second?
Second.
Ms. Van Horn? Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, public comment is closed. Mr. Sjedil, I want to join you. Also, I've known Ms. Willenbrock for a very long time, a personal friend of the family. You know, Patty's a very special person, so, you know, we, we all wish her the best and wish her family the best as they transition. Are there any other final comments by board members that they would like to make?
I would like to say that it has been my pleasure serving on this board in the Curriculum Committee with Ms. Melissa Stager, and I wish her well in her future and look forward to finishing out the year with her, and all the best.
You're here?
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Stager. Any other comments by board members? Okay, at this time, can we have a motion to adjourn? That was Ms. Van,
Second.
Ms. Matthews, second. Mr. Sjedil, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we are officially adjourned at 7:39. Thank you, everybody, have a good night.